Call the meeting to order, please. Will you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation given by Pastor Aaron Agnew?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity. To search for your grace in this meeting, we pray for insight and for your will to be done, and that this will have a certain end in this agenda. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko. Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Yeah.
We do have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the Lowell City Council minutes of the regular meeting, February the seventeenth, two thousand and nine. Any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
So move.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum, Mr. Raymond Burns.
Mayor, thank you. The events of the week of January twenty-sixth brought out a lot of things in northwest Arkansas that weren't very pretty, like tree limbs and power lines, but it also brought out something that we think is more important. It brought out a lot of dedicated city employees, and it brought out the best in our people in northwest Arkansas. With that in mind, I have a resolution of appreciation from our board of directors I'd like to read, whereas the week of January twenty-sixth, two thousand and nine brought one of the worst ice storms in the history of northwest Arkansas, and whereas the storm caused unprecedented damage to trees, power lines, private and public property, and whereas the storm jeopardized the general well-being and safety of the citizens of Lowell, and whereas the city of Lowell is charged with providing for the general welfare and public safety for its citizens, and whereas the dedication, long hours, and quality of service provided to the citizens of Lowell during our time of crisis is appreciated, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Rogers Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce thanks and commends the city staff, department heads, elected and elected officials for their compassion, hard work, and acts of heroism during our recent crisis adopted the twelfth day of February two thousand and nine by the Rogers Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And with that, Your Honor, I'd like to present this to the city and again accept our sincerest thanks on behalf of the businesses and of the residents and everyone in northwest Arkansas. Your team performed admirably, and we recognize that, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is escrow account agreement, Michael Solomon.
This is for Come and Go and Goat Springs Road, and the one change that you'll find is there's a paragraph in there where we say that it will be approved by the building inspector, and that will be changed to street superintendent. And basically, we're still hashing out some things, but I needed to get the agreement in principle passed by the city council.
What's still being hashed out?
Well, it has to do with, and Mary, you may have to correct me on this, but the way I understand it is normally they send us a check directly, and then Mary goes and deposits that check into, you know, a bank here in town. What they have asked is instead of doing that, they want to actually go to the bank and deposit the check themselves, and that's fine, except that a lot of the banks around here won't do that. They don't want to act as the agent. They want to just hold the money. So, you know, it's kind of one of those things where they're working it out with a group in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and the way they do it up there to the way we do it down here. The reason it's important that we get it through tonight is because they want to open the Come and Go on the tenth, and this will hold up their certificate of occupancy. Did I explain that correctly, or? Oh, okay, and this is for street improvements along Goat Springs Road, and this is their portion. You know, I think we've had two or three of these that have come through in the last six months, so.
So the only, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The whole reason is, is that the plan's hard to widen the road in the future, correct? And that's why we're putting off on this? That's correct, and we go on the master street plan to come up with how much they'll be widened.
So nothing really is going to change on this? It's just a matter of where that money's going to be deposited?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Do I understand this right, that if this money's not used in five years, they get it back? Is that how it works?
That's correct. That's a city ordinance that we have.
When's Goat Springs on the?
On the?
Improvement map.
Improvement plan? I believe it's within five years, but I couldn't tell you for sure, Marty. You know, and it could be, we could get the design for it done and use this money to help pay for the design. I believe that's right. No, we cannot. Okay. Never mind. I knew I was going to put my foot in the ground somewhere, so I appreciate you, Mary.
Well, it might prolong the length of time. We can keep the escrow account as long as we're working on it. That's the, so if we're starting work on this project within a period of five years, before five years is up, then we can go ahead and keep the escrow in by proving to them we're working on it.
But we can't use the funds until we actually start building? Is that the?
We can't use it until the building is done, and then they go back, the engineers go back at that time and reassess what it really did cost, and then if it's more, they're supposed to pay more. If it's less, we give them money back.
Any other questions?
So none of this money could be used on any improvements on two sixty-four? It has to be on Goat Springs Road only?
That's correct, and we were not able to do two sixty-four because it is a state highway.
Okay.
Mayor, do you know where Goat Springs is on our planning?
It's not on the five-year plan at this time. Goat Springs Road is, we have noted, it depends on the development. We're going to have to have quite a bit of it developed before the city can build it because it costs about four point four million dollars to build that road from two sixty-four to Mills Lane. And if, you know, if it develops fast enough, and hopefully it'll develop within the next five years, but it's on there as pending development. And of course, we note these, Mary keeps track of them, to watch when these things expire, because, you know, we've got a lot of things that have expiration dates on them, bonds and so forth, and that's the best we can say right now. It depends on the development.
Could we, I mean, does it make sense to maybe begin to work at the intersection, open it up, use this money so it doesn't expire, or does not? And maybe that's a stupid question I'm asking, but I'm just trying to understand the concept or how we?
It really isn't feasible just to build part of a road.
I see, I mean, you see how time rolls, where there'll be four lanes and they'll jump down to two, where they obviously begun something such as at an intersection. I just hate to see, it sounded to me, we don't have this in our five-year plan, and I hate to see this money, this seventy-five thousand dollars almost, not be used, that was put up to be used for, and at some point, we probably are going to do work on this road, and if this money expires, then we're going to come out of pocket that?
Well, we would watch the expiration date on it, Kendall. I can't tell you it'll be built in five years. Maybe somebody else can, but the first thing that pops in my mind, where do we get four point four million dollars?
Sure.
Can't use a longer term? I guess five years must be the magic number, or?
That's the ordinance states, five years.
Tom?
Marty, that, you know, there's some state law restrictions and our own ordinance restrictions, and then it's also just restrictions as to what you can sort of get someone to cooperate with. And, but that last bit, the cooperation, I know that Mary, I've worked for her a little bit before, where some of these agreements bind the city to do one thing or another, but she's been able to approach the holder, you know, the person who paid in, the company, and negotiate with them to move it to another project or hold it a little longer, so that is possible. It's just that it takes their consent. But they have good incentives to, they want that road built as well, you know, and they may want to allow us to hold a little bit less, but longer, or they may want to move it to another project so that they know that their credit has been paid for this one. We've done that before. It just takes their consent. So while the agreement complies with state law as far as how we can hold someone's money, there are possibilities to move it around. Okay, so that, you know, and Mary does, she watches that, in my experience, because it happened on Lincoln Street, where we did that with several. We moved the money around.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the escrow agreement.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the workshop reports. I think we had one workshop, and that was on parking in the yard. Paula, do you have anything to add at this time?
At this point, I've paraphrased kind of what we had covered during our meeting and got that over to Tom, along with a copy of the Springdale ordinance, which we felt was very straightforward, and at this point, Tom is working on a draft for us, and we hope to have something for, to present next, possibly next, meeting.
Thank you, Paula. Next item is a museum committee meeting. It's held on the second Tuesday of each month, six o'clock at the museum. That pretty well takes care of our regular agenda, but since we have some time, we'd kind of like to bring the council up to date on some of the activities that's been going on in the city. First up, Michael Solomon.
Thank you. I'm going to stay in my chair, hope everybody can hear me. This is a program that we just bought. We bought a license to. I ran a report off of it. There's a couple of things in the package that Chris prepared, and Chris and I have been working on this quite a while, and just coming up with the best way to present all as we move forward, and the things that people are looking for. And I'm just going to go through a couple of highlights. What you're looking at right here, I can, I can move this pen. I know right there I put it and says this pen cannot be moved, but that's only because I've saved this setting. But I can do the demographics for any, if there's any business in Lowell. And I'll give you a, go back to one, just real quickly that I chose. These are points that I've already saved in the computer. One that I did was Bloomington Crossing, and I'm going to view the location. And this is, I believe this is the one-mile radius that I put, and let me just show you some things that I can do from here. I can come down, and something that this, that has been, that is new to this product is from the Gaddy Group with Little Rock. This is household-based demographics. These are more exact than what you'll find with census-based. We'll do five, ten, and thirty-minute driving times. So if we have somebody that comes in and says, hey, we want to put our business here, but we want to know what the drive time would be like for our people, and we want to know that in a thirty-minute, minute radius, what does that look like? I mean, what do the people in that group look like? I could run this. And we'll do the thirty-minute, and it shows us that there are, according to, there are three hundred and seventeen thousand people, one hundred and twenty-three thousand households in that area, in that thirty minutes, and if you want to break down the median age, you can see it, that's thirty-five. There's some other things that I can pull up. Length of residence, I can tell you that sixty-three thousand of the people have only been there one to five years, and you can see that that's kind of indicative of our area. There's a lot more people that are moving in. The stability inside Lowell, I think we're more in the six to ten. But one way I can look at that is I can pull this up. And what this is showing is the darker the areas, the more, the longer the people have been there. So you can see that we're, that we're kind of in bright pink, and I can zoom in on that a little bit. Let me show you something else that's kind of handy about this. If I, you know, if they ask, well, what's the MSA look like? I can actually pull that up here, and I can show you that in the MSA, which is something that some companies will ask for, these are some common things I can do by zip code, the different block groups, that I can write, place. Place is what the census in two thousand was taken on. CDSA, they say that that's the big box number. In other words, that's what big boxes look at. That's what the Gaddy Group has told me. So you can see from that location, those are the amount of people that are in the area that they would look at. And then, let's say that we start to talk about it a little more, and the person says, now, I want to know what exactly that looks like. They have partnered with, oops, that went too far. The Gaddy Group has partnered with Google Maps, and you can see that's the technology that I'm working on, off of here. With Google Maps, they have a street view. Oh. Never works when you're in front of people. There, go back. Just do it quick. Here's one I did in my house. All right. Now, I can push on this, and then I can go, and that's the street view in front of my house, and I can actually show somebody, you know, if this was a building that we were wanting to rent or show, I could actually pull it up and show them what it looks like. So that if they weren't in the area, I could pull this up and show them exactly what they're looking at, and could drive them down the street, show them what the area's like. It will help give somebody a bit of a feel of what they're looking at in Lowell. So that's just a few things. Do you have any questions, or?
Mike, can you break this down to, you know, say if you were looking for certain age groups, you know, people looking at their target markets, if you're looking at different income levels, or?
Right, that's, absolutely, I can do it this way, and then I can also. I did not buy the ethnic part of it. They have a couple of different, they have what they call economic stability index, which has many factors that show whether the area is stable, if their economy's stable, and if it's a place that would be risky to move on into. I'd be pretty good on that. Let me try to find you the ages here. On the reports I gave you, on the DVO reports, it does print that, it gives that written down there.
Yeah, we're seeing that, that's pretty cool.
Age. This gives you, this is just, again, this is a mild, it covers my house, but it shows you the median age, average age, gender, and then adults to children. That's as much as I'll break it down there. Like I say, I can create the reports, and give a bigger breakdown.
Thank you, Michael. Next item is our ice storm cleanup. We are through, except for the creeks. We've got Puppy Creek and Christie Creek to clean up yet. We found out today that we have to have a corps of engineers and EPA permit to get down in those creeks and clean them out, so we applied for those, so that'll finish us up. Today, we hosted the area FEMA meeting. I think there was representatives here from twelve local cities in Benton County, and they went over the, some of the payment methods of how does the cities get paid. We have our records all done. They're complete and ready to go. There's a, we have a meeting in the morning at nine o'clock with FEMA to start the process to get our money back. Right now, our costs, I think, setting at something like a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That includes everything. If that, if those costs hold up and we get reimbursed for them, our costs will be less than five dollars a yard for everything, which is pretty good. This past week, Jimmy and Rick from the street department, and Don and Donnie from the code and building inspection department, attended a two-day meeting in Fayetteville put on by ADEQ. This is regarding the second phase requirements for the next five years. These are very stringent requirements. This next five years not only involves the street department or drainage department, but the building inspectors get involved in it. So it's a growing mandated thing that, you know, we have nothing to do with except comply. They will be inspecting, and they expect us to comply with these requirements. We did find out in this last meeting, Jimmy told me that ADEQ can go up on a construction job, they are not allowed to shut it down. If they find violations, they come to the city, tell the city about it, to get it shut down and correct it and fine the city. So I think their teeth are getting a little sharper. These papers I handed you is the forms, just some of the forms that we're going to have to fill out. It's very time-consuming, and it's going to take a lot of time, not only of Jimmy's, but of Don's and Donnie's also, because it is spreading, and we don't know of anything you can do about it but comply. The EPA, which is a federal level of the ADEQ, has called and requested a meeting for the people in this area. They've asked to use our council room, and we've told them, yes, it will be available.
For a small fee?
Pardon?
For a small fee, right?
I think we let these people have it for nothing. But anyway, if we comply with ADEQ, we'll automatically be in compliance with EPA. So that's kind of where we stand. We're just starting in the second phase, so we'll get to it, we'll get it down, and we will be in compliance, and hopefully we won't have any fines. Okay, tomorrow, here in the council room at one o'clock, we've got the pre-construction meeting to start the construction of Lincoln Street. Following that pre-construction meeting, we'll have the Robinson pre-construction meeting. It's probably a couple or three weeks away from starting because we've got some federal or state permits that we don't have yet, so, but Lincoln Street is ready to go. They're already surveying, and that's it. The Christie Creek sewer line, the design is coming along in good shape on that, and it should be ready, the final design, in the next probably two or three weeks, because we've approved the preliminary design. Along with that Christie Creek sewer line is the, of course, the Christie Creek drainage area. This city has had on, I guess it's been in the budget for the last, what, three, four years to build a Christie Creek detention pond? We've had seven hundred thousand dollars in our budget, half to be paid by Bethel Heights. Well, as it turns out, we're not going to have to build that detention pond because it wouldn't do the city any good, or keep the people that's getting flooded, do them any good. So we've contracted with Chris Button. He's, they're also doing the design of the Christie Creek sewer line because they run side by side, and he told us last week, he said, it won't do you any good to build that detention pond. So that was good news, but yet we still have a couple of flooding problems we've got to address. So that helped out our pocketbook quite a bit. The two sixty-four?
So we're going to take care of the drainage? We're going to run, I guess, sewer drain along with the sewer main that runs through there?
They run side by side, Keith, and we had this And we had this Christie Creek's drainage problem that's been on this city's records to correct for years, and nothing was ever done. And I felt like since we were going right beside it, we need to have the same engineers look at the Christie Creek drainage area, so they, that would be compatible. We don't wanna go in there and put a sewer line in, and in six months, go in there and have to move it to make room to build a detention pond.
How much is that gonna cost? Is that gonna cost over the $700,000 that we've got budgeted?
What's that?
To include that other, the other sewage, I guess, the stormwater sewer line? That's what you're putting in there, correct?
No. We don't have, you're talking about, this is sanitary sewer line, Christie Creek sewer line.
Okay.
Now, the Christie Creek drainage area has no lines in it. It's a matter of cleaning it out. We've got an area that we may have to reroute it some, but that's all.
Because we're just gonna put a swell in, I guess? Is that the plan or...
We're gonna cut it out in places, but we don't have to go to the expense of building a detention pond. So that was good news. But anyway, we're getting that solved, hopefully, once and for all. The 264 business sewer line out west, I'll be getting with craft and tile engineers tomorrow on the design phase of that line. We've had some very good reception from our businesses and developers on helping us build these two lines, because without their help, we didn't have the money to build them. But we went to them and talked to them and told them, you know, this is, this is the only way we can do it, fellas, and if you'll help us, we'll do our part. And I think everybody agreed, but two so far, I think. There's only two. One developer, or individual owns land, and another one, said they, they'll wait. So, and that's fine. That won't wreck our plans, but it would make them a lot easier if they would have contributed, but we'll get through it, we'll make it. Any questions anybody has that we can answer?
These forms you handed out, is this gonna be for every permit in the city? For any commercial? Is this gonna be for any project in the city going forward? These forms that you handed out earlier? Checklist?
We have to fill these out and send them in.
Including residential or is it commercial only?
City. Period. Citywide.
That's for city permit.
Okay.
It has to be citywide. We've got, we've complied with Phase 1. We're in compliance with it. So this one's a lot tougher. Any other comments?
What do you think the timing is on the, back to the FEMA stuff or the Corps of Engineer things? What's the timing on getting the permits? And FEMA won't help at all with clearing the creeks? The city's gonna have to do all that?
They'll help us. I mean, they'll pay, you know, part of it.
FEMA will?
Yes.
For clearing the creeks?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay.
But we couldn't see keeping the contractors we had to do that, because they're part of the contract. They couldn't get off of city streets. Now, the city employees will clean out the creeks, and will be reimbursed for the use of our equipment, and it looks like any overtime that we have. We don't think they'll pay for regular time.
What's the timing on this? I mean, how long do you think it'll take them to do that? I'm really concerned about the condition of our creeks.
Oh, we are too. In fact, we've, we've actually cleaned out a couple or three spots that would definitely cause flooding if we got a big rain. But they said it would take a week to two weeks to get the permits from the Corps of Engineer. And in fact, we'll start on them as soon as we get them, because we were gonna start cleaning them out tomorrow, but we can't.
You can't even pull logs out of them?
Ah, you can pull out of them, you just can't get down in them. And there's places we've gotta get down in them to clean them out. And that's, you can pull logs out, I think, just don't get down inside them, because if they catch us, well, we'll probably get a fine for it. They're getting nasty about these drainage areas, people. So I know it's causing some hardship on some people, but there's nothing we can do. We didn't know till today that we had to have the Corps and the EPA permits to clean them out, because we were starting tomorrow. If we hadn't had that meeting today, the city would have been in violation, starting in the morning at 7:30. So that's kind of, we're postponing it because of that.
I guess I'm concerned about a two-week delay. I mean, this is first of March. The rains will come soon.
That's true. That's true. We, Jimmy has traveled the most likely areas to flood, and to make sure that what's in there won't cause us a problem. He feels we're in pretty good shape. We're not gonna flood anybody. That's our first concern. And we did have a couple of places that we reached in and got them, and got them out of there because of that. But we're done till we get the permits. Any other questions? Comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
Some of...
Second.